Seven PM, I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the zoning board of appeals. Just let everybody know that this meeting is being recorded. First up is the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is roll call for attendance.
Maureen Schiffering.
Wesley Pettit.
George Slingo.
Weson Ross.
Steve Wachrowa.
Okay, this is a public hearing for four Sophie's Way. Applicant is seeking a thirteen-foot variance in, on front setback and ten point six feet variance on side setback for new construction. I'll open the public hearing at seven oh one.
Mr. Chairman, I'm on the abutters list, so I'm gonna refuse myself at this time.
Okay.
Good evening, Board. So, we're looking for a front yard setback reduction due to the fact that some of the garage is in the setback because of the radius of the road. We were mistaken on a stake that is on the property and we drove off of that. It wasn't until we had the ASB build done that we discovered that stake was, that there's a stake there, but the actual property core is fifteen more feet off of it. So, that's how that came about. The side yard setback is on the detached garage. Same thing, we went off the wrong measurement. The biggest challenge was getting a surveyor out there. We tried for months, couldn't get a surveyor. It wasn't until we finally got someone else to do the ASB build that we discovered the issues. The house was, at that point, was already framed. The garage foundation is in, the detached garage foundation is in. And if the Board wishes to not grant the side yard setback, we're prepared to shrink the size of that garage to bring it out of the setbacks, so it complies. That's that. It took me months just to get a surveyor out there to do the ASB build. They were all so busy, none of them returned calls. It's kinda where we're at.
Any questions from the Board? Okay, hi there.
I mean, I guess I already know the answer to this question, but I just wanna make sure. You didn't start this construction before you pulled the permit, did you?
No, sir. No, we had a building permit.
Okay.
When we pulled the building permit, the building commissioner came out when the foundation was in, told us we needed to get an ASB build, which is normal protocol for new construction. And like I said, it took two months to get a surveyor out there just to do an ASB build. I could show you text messages where I was constantly texting the surveyor to come out and he was just so swamped. He got overloaded with work because there was a surveyor, I think he was out of Southbridge, that just shut down shop and he ended up with most of his workload and he was just really backed up and couldn't get to stuff.
Are you the developer of the whole neighborhood?
No, sir.
You bought the one lot?
I bought that one lot. We're gonna reside at that lot.
Okay.
It's not a spec house, it's our home. We moved back from Florida. I was a Dudley resident my whole life. We moved to Florida for like three years. Wasn't for us, so we came back. So, we're staying with family right now, trying to get the house done. We were on for the November meeting. The newspaper made a screw-up, which pushed it to tonight's meeting and I'm just trying to get my family into the house, because like I said, we're staying with family.
Are there any abutters present? Would you like to speak?
Well, my mom only speaks Spanish, so she'll, I'll try to interpret the best I can.
Okay. That's good, 'cause I know very little Spanish.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, everyone. My name is Amparo Munoz.
My name is Amparo Munoz.
And my neighbor probably, right?
Yeah.
I understand that we have a good neighbors.
I understand we have good neighbors.
And understand also when the neighbor given her construction, did authorization through the, through the...
To build.
To build her property.
Can you translate to Spanish?
No, I don't understand why the garage has to be... It has to be very close to the perimeter of the line that should be observed according to the law. I understand that it can be nothing more than a few small centimeters, but we don't observe the law that it should be. I think we all should observe what the laws say and regulations for the construction. And that it has to respect the law, and that's why it's important. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other abutters?
State your name for the record and... My name is Nicholas Labovitis. I bought the property at forty-five Sommel Road in Dudley, Massachusetts. I bought that house for my parents and when we lived in Fitchburg, one issue that we had was that like they weren't complying with the rules and regulations. So, my friend Jason, who was his mom's house, sold me this house and then told me like how amazing the city is and how there is these rules that your neighbors are not too close. And it's like fifteen feet, if I'm not mistaken, the law?
Well, it's different zones.
Yeah, the zone. And, you know, like, as you said, when, before this meeting started, like following the rules, you know, and these are the rules and then liberty and justice for all. So, I'm against granting this variance because right there we have a well and even though there might be like low risk of anything happening, last thing I want is like my elderly parents dealing with some of these issues that if the well gets to be contaminated. And that's why I'm kind of like against granting this variance for this construction.
All right, he's asking for two variances.
Yeah.
One for the house and one for the garage.
Yeah.
So, you're against both of them?
Yes.
Which lot is forty-five? Is it the one diagrammed here?
No, it's down the street. Forty-five Sommel Road's not even near here.
Okay. How far do you, would you say it is?
I'll see. My, my old house that I grew up in is at thirty-five and it's right near this, so ten houses down further, it must be, it's a ways down.
Just a curious question too for the applicant. The garage, I understand the house is a full foundation with frost walls. Does the garage also have frost walls?
It's a frost wall, yes, sir.
It's not a monolithic slab or...
We were gonna do a monolithic slab and because of the topography of the lot...
Okay.
I would've been, to be at grade in the back, I would've been two and a half feet in the front.
Gotcha.
That's why we did the frost wall. The frost wall steps down two feet to go with the land. Thank you.
So, I'd like to speak as an abutter. So, because it's the front corner of the garage that's attached to the house, it's been referred to as the garage and I think that's adding some confusion here. And I wanna make sure that the people that are against this understand that we're talking about two different buildings completely.
Well, do you have this with it? Just look at it? You have sight, yeah?
No, I've seen it.
Maybe you put up some understanding?
Yeah, so, to make it clear, if you deny both variances, which is what right now they're asking for...
Correct.
He has to tear his house down and I don't think they want him to have to tear his house down. I think their main concern is the garage, the detached garage that is near their property line.
Yeah, that's, that's the way I'd do it.
So, that's, I just, I...
Can you explain that?
Well, it sounds like, I think our main concern is the garage.
The detached garage.
The detached garage.
The one that doesn't have any framing on it right now, it's just a foundation right now.
That's, that's... Because it's, you know, it looks from this right here that it's very close and I think one of the concerns would be that if we were to resell the land, if the variance was allowed and we were to resell the land or build a property on our land, that we would always have to inform anyone who would come to buy it that there is a variance that has been. And they may question why that's so close to the land. And I'm not sure, the footage right there, it sounds like he did the right thing, like he was waiting to hear back from someone that he tried to contact, but then went ahead and with the project. And we all know that there's delays in projects all the time, but he still went forward and did that once he understood that that would be encroaching inside...
So, your main concern is the separate garage?
That's correct, right?
Yes.
Because the house is, the frontage is here, right?
Yes, the front.
Okay. Yeah, once I get the ASB built, I was like, whoa. That's why we never built the garage, because it is in the back corner, right there. The back corner is four foot, four inches from the property line because it comes up at an angle.
And what is it zoned for?
Fifteen.
Should be fifteen feet away.
Fifteen. And would you say it's four feet? So, it's eleven feet.
Eleven feet, too close.
Yeah, that's why I was asking for the eleven-foot side yard. But we already planned to shrink that garage to make it a one-kind garage, to get it out of the setbacks, so it's not an issue. The front, the front on the house abuts the road, so it doesn't affect any neighbors.
And it's a cul-de-sac, so three lots on the back, all three of those houses are now in, so it's not gonna be a situation where it's gonna obstruct anybody's sightlines or anything. Really, and because it's at the end of a cul-de-sac, you don't really have to worry about traffic sightlines anyways. That's my take on it.
Plus, it sits up on a hill. The house sits way up on a hill, so it's not obstructing anything.
And there won't be any need to change the well location or the septic?
No, sir.
So, concerned of... Town sewer, actually.
Concerned of any contamination of a well doesn't change?
No, it's town sewer and...
Oh, is it?
Well, yep.
Would this bring you in compliance if you were to make it a one-kind garage?
Yes, sir.
So, it would make it fifteen feet off...
Yes, sir.
The property.
Yep, we're shrinking it twelve feet. It would make it a sixteen-foot garage, which is kinda sad, but it is what it is. So, it'd just be like a wider one-kind garage, it'd be sixteen feet versus a normal garage being twelve feet. And that would, that would bring it a foot, it would bring it just about sixteen feet off the property line, so I'd be a foot more than what I need.
Wouldn't even need, if he had originally built a sixteen-foot wide garage in the position that this is gonna end up in, he actually wouldn't even need the variance, he would be over fifteen feet away from your line.
The main concern is not affected the land, but for, for me, I don't understand you are doing in construction. Did you get authorization to build, to build your house before?
Yeah, I have a building permit.
You present everything there?
Yes, ma'am, yep. Yep. They, they, on new construction, once the foundation's in, they, they make you get, it's called an ASB build, and they come out and they show on paper where everything is. And once we got there, we realized we had a problem, which is why we applied to the zoning board and...
It looks like, for me, it looks like you have a big space and, I mean, for you to just decide to build a garage right there so close to the other property line, I mean, I don't know. It's just having some common sense as...
Well, you have to see where the driveway, where his driveway is.
It's a hill.
It's actually on the other side of the driveway.
Yeah.
There's a driveway in there that you don't see on that map.
If you went to the site and looked at it with that, it would probably make more sense. I know you're looking at a piece of paper, but because the land goes up, it's a hill. But the main, the main concern is the detached garage, like she said, and I agree, that's why I'm here, and, and I already poured a wall to shrink the garage to get it out of the setback, so regardless, that won't be an issue. And like I said, the front setback abuts the road, it doesn't abut any of the abutters.
So, you already poured a wall for the other garage, so you're in compliance?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then you're gonna cut away and remove the concrete that's over the setback?
Yes, sir. Yep, that's gonna get ripped out. Okay. We had to, we had to pour that new wall and let it set up. They just did it this week and we had to let it set up, so we didn't damage anything where we ripped the old, that other area out.
Well, the thing is that like, I've been in like multiple, I launched like multiple businesses and restaurants, for example, you have like so many laws, rules and regulations that you need to comply. And even like when I was in the restaurant, because my, my table was like less than half an inch, I wasn't given a permit. And I am the house right next up the hill over there right now and it's gonna cause issues for me even when I were to sell this house. And I don't think like we should be granting those variances, you know, just to accommodate a new build, a new construction. There's already like a bunch of environmental damage done already with all the trees going down and everything. And when I bought the house, it was like privacy, now it's naked, I see everything. And having people to come in even closer and closer and closer while having a well and elderly parents that might not be able to sell a house because of this.
Now, you have a well on your property?
Yeah, I do.
Like Steve said, it's like four, five, six houses up the road, so I don't...
But if I'm not mistaken, if...
I may be mistaken, now that he says...
Is it the red house?
Are you in the red house?
Yeah.
Right behind?
I'm right there.
Oh, yeah, he's in the, he's in the red colonial, so technically he's gonna be behind their house when they build it.
Right. So, if gentleman was to actually move the house to be in compliance near that cul-de-sac...
He would actually be moving it back.
To your house.
He would be moving it closer to your house. If he, if he had to tear down his house and move it back, he would move it closer to your house.
So, where is this house exactly? Like, is it like the one...
It's the big white one.
Is the one next, right next to like, okay, so... Okay.
This, this lot right here...
So, where's my house?
This is her lot.
Okay.
Okay? This is your lot, right here.
Okay.
Okay, so your house is here and you've gotta pull back here.
Yes.
So, if he has to tear this house down and bringing it to compliance, he's gonna move it even closer to your house. Understand?
Yeah, but I don't want that.
And, well, so then, so then you want, you want him to have the variance so he can leave it where it is.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, like I don't want anyone closer.
And this garage, he's going to cut this garage in half, basically, and move this, this is gonna go away, away from her lot.
Okay.
So, he's moving away this direction with the garage from here and he wants to keep the house here and not have to move it that way.
Yeah, I don't want it closer.
Okay.
That's what I thought. So, just, just two points if I may, because you may not be aware of it, I mean, there's really two factors at play with the zoning board. We're here with the ability to grant a waiver for somebody who has a hardship. They have to prove and convince us that they have a hardship that would be the reason why they would ask us to change those rules. But then on the other hand, we have to make sure that it's, that any change isn't detrimental to your neighborhood. So, those are our responsibilities. And for that reason, in terms of the garage, absolutely, I feel that garage is too close to the property line. I think it was a big mistake, but I think it needs, I'm gonna vote no on that point of it for the garage. I am gonna look out for, I'm only speaking of myself, not the other members here. I'm gonna be concerned about, you know, your neighborhood, but that's the way I feel. But, so you understand, you know, we can change those rules a little bit, but only if it's not detrimental to you or your neighborhood. And my opinion is, it won't be detrimental. For the house, the garage, I see an issue.
Yeah, no, the house, I'm okay with the house being, I don't wanna tear somebody's house down and stuff like this. The thing is that like with a garage, because I have a well here, like I'm the one, the house going uphill over there, so I don't want more construction around the well. Like it's, I drink water from there, my parents too, so...
But I mean, these are approved lots and it went through conservation and all of that. Even when you, when you buy into a neighborhood, sometimes the neighborhood changes a little.
The back, the back of that detached garage is not in a setback, so you can see the red line.
Yeah, but it goes really off the red line here on the thing, like the border is here, but this one really goes off, like it's like one-third of a garage off the line.
That's why, that's why I'm gonna tear that off and make it smaller.
Okay. So... Pretty much, you don't need a variance for this one?
Technically, I applied for it, but technically I really don't.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna shrink it.
This other one doesn't affect me at all.
Exactly.
So, I don't have an issue with this.
It doesn't affect anybody.
Doesn't affect anybody on this one.
Yeah.
Just the garage is the one close to my well and close to the uphill.
Right.
Okay, any other, any other questions from the Board? Questions from the abutters? I'm gonna close the public hearing at seven twenty-four. I'm gonna make a motion.
I make a motion that we close the meeting, hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Your name is? Okay, discussion?
I'll just reiterate what I already said, the garage does concern me, the house, it's unfortunate, but it doesn't concern me in terms of benefits or judgment to the neighborhood. So, my feelings are that we would deny the part of the request for that detached garage.
Would you like to make that in a formal motion?
George, one more thing.
Yes, sure.
Can you, if we grant your variance, can you supply us ASB build for the building department for the garage?
Can I what? I'm sorry.
ASB plan, when you cut the garage?
So, so we have, we have a stake that was set off of that back corner, which is the property line, right off the back corner of the garage. If you, if you want me to get another ASB build, I can, but like I said, it took me almost three months to get this one.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I think we should get another ASB build.
Okay.
Because we don't really know exactly, it's gonna be fifteen feet setback.
Right. Okay, I mean, we could come out, we could go out there tomorrow, measure it, the foundation's in and I got the...
Engineerate plan, it takes, you know...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's no problem, so basically...
So, could I, if he's already talking about remediating it, wouldn't that be a done deal? He could withdraw his request for the variance?
He could withdraw.
That was my next question.
He could withdraw that. He could ask, he could ask the Board to withdraw that.
But then would that nullify you, your request of going out to look for another measurement?
Yes.
And I said, we leave it in place, have it remeasured, make sure it's not encroaching within the fifteen feet?
But I...
He's saying...
But if I, but if, but if they, if they back it out of, if, if, if I ask him to remove that part of the variance, then none of that can apply.
But for you, it would be an issue... Okay. But for you, it would be an issue if we go to sell and they come out and they do a plan.
Right, right.
And it's still over the property, then you're gonna be in more hot water.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If it's, that's up to you, whether you want to do that or not.
Yeah. That would be me rolling the dice.
I don't know how this will play into it, but my concern really is the concrete of the garage. I don't want you to just build a smaller garage and leave the concrete there and call it a retaining wall.
No, no.
I would want...
It's gonna be removed down below grade, and it'd be bad for them.
So I guess we just have to make sure of how we're gonna do an inspection to make sure it was done? Is that something the building official would have to do?
Yes. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, how can I, I mean, is it easier to just remove the side yard request?
You can re, if you, yes, you can, you can ask for that if maybe, you can...
Rescind?
You can rescind.
Yeah, it is the word.
The 10.6 variance for the side lot. If you're asking us to, you know, that's what you're asking now, to waive that?
Yes, sir. I'm asking to rescind the side yard request and just keep the front yard request. And I will on my own, to satisfy the neighbor, I'll have another ASBIL done. I can't promise it'll be right away, because like I said, it took me three months to get this one. But the second I have it, I'll provide a copy to them.
I'm not, we're not really asking for ASBIL entire property, just that piece of...
The garage.
Yeah, that you remove it up 15 feet. So you just get engineer to verify that portion.
Might, yeah, might.
Measure thirty-five.
Yes, sir. My concern with, my only concern with that is we're trying to get into the house, and if you make that a condition, the building commissioner is probably gonna hold up my CO. And then we're talking two more months down the road, which, which is impossible.
Are you planning on building, are you planning on building the separate garage right away?
No. At this point, probably not till spring.
Okay.
So before, if you want to make it a condition before he issues me a building permit, I'll give him an ASBIL.
If we can, we can condition it that you have to get an ASBIL before you start construction of the garage.
Of the garage.
Yes, sir.
That works for everybody?
I need to know why is there reason you are, you are doing your garage far away from the house. But it's just only the garage is...
It's because of the way, the way the yard is up there, because of the hill. If I, plus my wells right here, and if I move the garage over this way, it would be too close. And I have to stay away from the well.
The yard is big. The yard is big.
In the back, it's big, but not here. It's deceiving.
Sounds good to me.
Hmm?
That sounds good to me.
I consider now cause for the problem.
So if, so if I understand this correctly right now, like this variance here will be granted, which doesn't affect anybody, but the garage one will not, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And you guys are okay with this, because it doesn't affect you or me or anybody, right?
Yeah.
I don't know what...
This one.
So you built this close to the road.
Yeah, this one doesn't affect anybody, doesn't hurt anybody, even if we sell it. But the garage affects you and me. So this will not happen, but this is okay. And the neighbor is happy.
Exactly.
We want to make friends in the neighborhood. Everybody wants to get along. I don't want everybody...
Yeah, even if, I'm not asking for it, but even if they gave me a variance for that detached garage, it would only affect her, not you, because it's not...
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't pass that way. I see, I see.
Right, right.
So... Okay, so I need, I need somebody to make a motion to grant the, is it the 13?
Yes, front setback.
Front setback.
I make a motion that we grant the variance for the front setback of 13 feet for number 40, Sophie's Way?
Four.
For Sophie.
Sorry. Okay. A motion's been made and seconded to approve the front setback for four Sophie's Way. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, unanimous. Now, the variance for the 10.6, for the side setback, he's...
He's withdrawn.
Huh?
He withdrew that.
He withdrew that?
Right.
Okay. So that's officially withdrawn and we're all set.
Yeah, Amanda can let the building commissioner know too that. I'm gonna peel the, I'm gonna peel the detached garage off of the permit, and I'll pull a separate permit for that.
Okay.
Because, because of the weather and everything, I don't think we'll get to it till the spring. And if you want to make it a condition, I'll supply an ASBIL of the foundation before we start construction.
He'll, yeah, he'll make it.
He'll make that condition anyway.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, board.
All right.
We all happy? All friends?
Yeah.
All right, cool.
Do we have to approve the minutes?
Yeah, you have to do the minutes first.
Next is to approve the meeting minutes for February 1st.
Yep.
So move. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, unanimous. Any newer or old business? I don't see any. Is there?
Did you don't do both minutes?
Oh, there's two separate.
There's two separate ones, July and November.
Oh, okay.
I looked that up so quick when you emailed it to me. I thought you actually duplicated it.
Okay, the meeting, meeting minutes for November 7th.
So move.
Okay.
I move we adjourn.
A motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, unanimous.
No, it was there already.
Okay. Now, no, now we're all set. Someone make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Someone has to make the motion.
I'll make it. Okay, I move we adjourn.
I second that motion. A motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, unanimous.